Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the Organ Committee and a joint reference of the Downtown Economic Growth Committee. This is relative to Council Order 2016-267, Council Order relative to a land disposition agreement with parcel R1 in the Hancock parking lot. Pursuant to the meeting log, any person who make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media, attending to therefore advise that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam President, please call it all. Council King, Council Paul, Council Vaughn, Council Finn, Council Harris, Council Hughes, Council Lynn, Council Paul Mudgee, Chairman of the Board, Section of the House. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to call forward from the City Planning Department, Bill Geary, the Special Counsel to the Mayor of the Downtown Development, as well as Rob Stevens, our Urban Newer Planner from the Planning Department. Mr. Geary.
Thank you very much, and Chairwoman, and through view to the members of the committee, members of the council, we are here this evening to present a presentation as to the various elements of the land disposition agreement that was entered into or we are proposing to enter into with Mr. Peter O'Connell for a project entitled Chestnut Place. We do have a number of members of the team, both the team that represented the city of Quincy as well as the team that represented Mr. O'Connell. I am going to show a couple of brief slides that are introductory in nature that provide a context for the location of this project. And those slides will be presented for the specific purpose of giving the members of the committee a perception of how this particular project fits into the overall vision for developing the Hancock Lot. I want to emphasize this, as I did in the transmitted memorandum that accompanied the LDA, that this submission, of course, is subject to the enactment by the legislature of special legislation that was initiated by a home move petition approved by this council unanimously, that in essence was a technical correction to law, to the law that the special act that's enacted a number of years ago, 2011, that unfortunately was no longer usable because it referenced just one designated redevelopment. As the council knows from our prior appearances before the council, particularly with the enactment of Amendment Number Four to the RDP, that the city has distinguished from the prior template that was envisioned under the street board program, instead of developing both Hancock Lot and Ross Lot by one developer, the city has been working with prospective developers to develop designated parcels, starting with the Hancock Lot. And so this pertains to one parcel on the Hancock Lot, 13,526 feet. It's a prominent parcel embedded faces of the Ryan Parkway. It's located near the intersection of Cottage Street and nearly contiguous therefore to the west of Chestnut Development. This LDA, of course, is also, as I mentioned in the transmitted, subject to an appraisal, which is still underway and we expect to have on Wednesday. So, of course, we will be providing information, material proceeding on the finances that underpin this particular proposed development. And as soon as we have that appraisal, we will be sharing it with the members of the council, and you will then have that information upon which to make determinations as to the advisability of this proposed LDA. And finally, in the contextual slides that we have this evening, I reemphasize that these are provided just for your spatial acclamation, if you will, to the Hancock Lot, how the O'Connell building, which is quite prominent, if you look on the screen, is the only 15-story building depicted, because as a practical matter, the marketplace right now would not build that type of structure here in Quincy, what the marketplace will afford for construction of housing units are standard four, five, or six over the pedestal. And so this is a building that's quite unique, and for that reason, it's being financed uniquely with a 121A agreement, which one of our team will explain to you the economics of. So, and finally, we are proposing, predicated on the enactment of this special legislation, that the developer of Chestnut Place also develop a garage that the city has long envisioned to be located in the Hancock Lot, containing approximately 650, 700 spaces, that will serve not only the O'Connell project, but will be used to service all the future projects to come and the general public. However, we are not focusing on that particular aspect of the Hancock Lot development this evening. This is a separate agreement, although it will include the designation of O'Connell should the legislation be enacted, as the building, the construction manager for the garage, that will be a separate proceeding before this body, that we will, we hope to bring before the body in February, both for its financing. The preliminary design of that structure is presently underway, and by February, we would expect to have a progress on that preliminary design, which will yield estimated costs for that structure, will deal with public amenities intended to that structure, as well as the apartment utilities that are critical to that structure, as well as to facilitating development in the Hancock Lot, i.e. street, escapes, open space, infrastructure, including the relocation of a major sewer line. However, that matter is not before you this evening, it will only be before you when we submit that with more details, and we, of course, expect the council will launch and have a full exposition of all the issues related to that in a public setting, as to the design of the garage and what its impacts may be on adjoining communities, traffic flow, and the like. So, just pointing to the slide that is on the screen currently, you can see that, as I mentioned, the O'Connell property is designated as R1, the garage is P1, there's a proposed R2 that would be contiguous to the O'Connell property on the south end of the lot at the intersection of Ryan Parkway and Andy Concourse, there's a prospective R3 development. I believe many of you are familiar with the project designated H1, which is being proposed by LBC. Of course, we see the structures that are actually either recently completed or under construction, and that's D1, known as the Galvin property, and D2 is, of course, west of Chestnut. Here's another overview that was a three dimensional, but this shows some of the necessary infrastructure work that will have to be completed to foster or proceed with development on the Hancock Lot. It involves sewer relocation, utility improvements, and the rerouting on Cottage Avenue to facilitate development, stormwater drainage, stormwater improvements. Service improvements include whitening streets and other street side improvements and utility Finally, here is a depiction of the Chestnut Place designated R1 with the adjoining proposed garage, as it would appear if you were standing on Hancock Street looking eastward. So, as per my earlier comments, much more needs to be done on the design of that garage. There are a number of structural elements that we need to deal with, but all of that will come before this body at a waiting date. And this evening, we want to concentrate on essentially a real estate transaction, a commercial real estate transaction, that's not simple, but complicated, and so deserves a number of explanations from the team that assembled here. I'd like to start by calling Mr. Carlos Skupke, who's the engineer, consulting engineer for Peter O'Connell, and he has a pal with him, Mr. Todd Casey, who's the project manager for the project.
Thank you, Mr. Geary.
Good evening, Chairwoman. Welcome to the councilors. Carlos Skupke, the EDI Consulting, the African Civil Engineer on the project. Let me just bring up a couple of slides here quickly. So what we have in front of you today is a brief discussion about the site, we'll talk about the elements of the site design and a little bit of the building as well. So to begin here, we have a rendering of the proposed building review from Dennis Ryan Parkway, subject to where the courthouse currently is, looking at the current building. We'll get a little bit more into the aesthetics of the building a little bit later, but for context, the R1 parcel is in the northwest corner of the Hancock Lot, with frontage you can see on the top of the page is Dennis Ryan Parkway, and to the left, you have Cottage Avenue running along the westerly side of Port B D, future access on that side. Around the corridor there, you have some photographs for context, starting in the upper left corner, we have views from Dennis Ryan Parkway, people walk by around, circle around, looking at the financial share. Down the right-hand side, we have views of the rear of the parking lot there, looking at some of the buildings that circle B, parking lot on the south side, and then here on the north side, we'll have some views from Hancock Street. So here's a rendered site plan depicting the proposed improvements to the site design. What you see here is that the proposed building shown in orange, it's going to be a 15-story mixed-use luxury residential apartment complex, a 15 stories, about 117,000 square feet, 124 residential units. The mix of those units is 76 bedroom, 24 one bedroom, 24 studio. At an on-the-ground level, we have about 13,000 square feet, I'm sorry, 4,200 square feet at retail on the ground level. So what you see is the access to the building, there's 16 surface parking spaces, with that access coming off of Dennis Ryan Parkway, with short-term building in front of the building, and some additional parking is served to the retail spaces on the A, which is the east side there. The main access from Dennis Ryan Parkway will be a new public roadway serving the project and all the building, will be served at the rear of the building, sufficient space for any sort of residential moving, as well as trash disposal, any sort of indicators for the retail spaces to be performed at the rear. What you also see in this rendering is the proposed city constructor, the city-designed parking garage, which is shown in gray at the bottom of the A side, as well as some of the other city improvements contemplated around the building on Cottage Avenue and at the rear of the site on Cottage Street. So as previously mentioned, the site, which is 13,526 square feet, is shown in gray at the center there, that is the portion of the overall development site is what we're considering, where the building will be located. So that 13,526 square foot parcel is the parcel that's contemplated in the management disposition agreement. The areas that you see around the perimeter, showing in yellow, magenta, green, and blue, are essentially access easements that are granted both the African facility to allow for connectivity for vehicles and pedestrian access, both to the Hancock Lot at the rear, as well as from access from the other parcels surrounding the perimeter. So what we have shown here is a design of the gradings from our management system. The site is gray that falls to the south, so from Dennis Ryan Parkway to the Hancock Lot. The site slopes in directional direction, stormwater management system's been designed to capture and lead all the city in SVP standard events for one quality, as well as trying to provide recharge in accordance with the city design standards. And we designed the proposed infrastructure to connect all of the existing city municipal stormwater and water utilities in their current position. So we are coordinating with the city's design team, as they contemplate additional improvements to make sure that the improvements that are designed by the design team, by the private team, are coordinated with the improvements that the city's currently designing, and we will continue to do so as the effort advances. And again, here's a brief utility plan, I'll speak about the existing utilities, the sewer, the water, the gas, and telecommunications, all go out to Dennis Ryan Parkway, but there's existing infrastructure to serve the development, and electric is served through the rear of the existing infrastructure that was installed recently as part of the city's work at the after transportation project, as well as the offset improvements that were finished on the tail end of that project. So what we have here is a footprint of the proposed ground floor building, it has 4,215 square feet of retail contemplated, so on the right-hand side of the page, that's Cottage Avenue, along the bottom of the page, that's Chestnut Street, or I'm sorry, Dennis Ryan Parkway. The main access, casino center, there's entry into the lobby to the building, with retail on both sides. It's a very prominent exposure for the retail spaces on the ground, we're activating that ground level and making consistency with the city's design standards for the downtown. It's really a good piece that works well with the neighborhood in terms of the ground level. And then you have the loading in the rear, and in the back, there's also a many spaces for classic residences. And then here's a typical floor plan that represents the floors 234 on the building, there's going to be a mix of studio units as well as one or two bedrooms, and the units range in size from roughly 680 square feet for the one bedrooms, to approximately 900 to 2,000 square feet for the two bedrooms. The floor plan changes a little bit as you go higher up in the building, from floors 5 through 15, it's again a mix of one or two bedrooms for the studio units, the studio units are approximately 500 square feet, and one bedroom units go up to 200 square So here, we have some elevations to the proposed building, so the concept here is a very high-end product with the luxury units that we intend to place here. And the exterior is going to be a historical design concept with brick and baseery on the ground level, with architectural splintered precast panels, all limestone finish as you go higher up in the building, and then accented windows as you transition from the brick to the limestone panels, as well as up on the higher levels, where we have a metal roof that's really going to be an accent that's going to define the building, it'll be a landmark that'll be visible from all directions as you approach the center. Again, here we have some elevations from both the left and the right side, you can see the articulation and the change of facade from the ground level, retail with the brick on the first few levels, transitioning to that some of the wall precast panels in the front of the building. And here we have a rendering of the building again, looking from Dennis Ryan Parkway, which shows the desire, the niche that we'd like to see on this project, that have it be the landmark in terms of center that it can be as a 15-story building, which is the maximum that's allowed, I write in the downtown district here. One portion that I did want to come back to is that, as previously mentioned by Mr. Geary, part of the effort with this development here is that you'll see between Cottage Avenue on the left-hand side of your page and the main building site, we have that green space, so the applicant has created to design and constructing that part as out in the disposition agreement. So that's really going to be a good landmark feature, a good place for the public together, and it will be for the public to navigate in the area.
Thank you very much, Carlos. Also, the terms of the LDA, not only charge the developer with the design, with the cooperation from the city, under the city's guidelines, that open space, that park, which is a public park, but also the other surrounding public improvements, the sidewalks and the like, but also with maintaining that space for the 40-year term that's contemplated under the terms of the LDA. At this point in time, I'd like to introduce some of the members of our team, and I listed Rob Stevens, who I know all of you know. Rob is a 13-year city employee and career planning professional. He is my closest counterpart and partner in all of us. He's been present since the inception of the program. He is the walking institutional memory for every nuance of this plan from its inception through the four amendments that have been approved by this council, an indispensable resource for the city throughout this, and I can't draw him more highly than the, not only the year that I've now had a chance to work with him directly today during my tenure as chairman, and he presented to our board. Of course, he's been involved in the negotiations as we've shaped this, certainly from the urban design and planning aspects, they're all integrated. I used the analogy earlier today, that to think about what we're trying to accomplish here in Quincy now, is to think about an air traffic control that's a great aspect. We've got all of these moving bogies, we're trying to get them off of land safely and properly, and at the same time, launch others. And that's something that Rob is expert at. Of course, Jim Fassi, the planning director, has also been involved in most of the negotiations, and has been a great assistance through that process. On the legal team, we've been represented by an able attorney, Robert Fishman, from another kind of fisher, who was involved in the prior LDA for Street Works. This panel meeting, we're going to meet momentarily, has been the city's financial expert. We've, of course, been utilizing the good capabilities of the Lord of Incurrence in terms of reviewing all of the intricate infrastructure components that have been implicated by attempting to, in essence, redevelop a city whose infrastructure is 100 years old in many respects. And we also have present here this evening, Mr. Fishman's colleague, Bill Kennedy, who assisted me in the drafting of the Home Move petition and filing legislation on V T Hill, and I can provide the council with an update that Bill was filed the week after this council approved the Home Move petition. His number was assigned to a committee, a committee of municipalities, it moved from that committee, which is a joint committee, I might add, of the Senate and the House, and it's currently at the Joint Ways and Means Committee, where it's being reviewed, and we are expecting and hoping before the end of this year, that the Ways and Means Committee will act favorably on it very soon, it will then go to the House for a vote, up or down, and then over to the Senate for concurrence. So Mr. Kennedy has been assisting us with that, and it's very, requires a great deal of vigilance to ensure that the bill keeps moving along. So I want to thank all of them. And now to give you the overview of the economics here, and it's important, some may wonder why a 15-story building, while the fact is that the real estate, the city's real estate and the two lots, Hancock and Ross, comprise about five acres each, and we're dropping about a small, minuscule proportion of one of those lots, and we're trying to maximize the value of that. We're also trying to achieve a level of concentration that economically in the long term is not only going to allow us to encourage development on the other blocks, which are going to take more public space, but have a return on the value, and provide the city with a synergy and a landmark for what we're trying to achieve overall there, in terms of space-making and creating a new public civic space that's going to draw people back into our historic downtown. And this is a discussion which we, of course, will elaborate on more fully when we bring before you the garage proposal, both for its financing, as well as for your approval of its architectural elements. So with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Eleanor McKinnon to step in the boardroom.
I'm pleased to see that my slides have been shown, nice to see you this evening, councilors. It is my task tonight to try to provide some overview of the financial underpinning, the financial underpinning of the agreement of both the LDA and the related agreements, I should say, with respect to the 121A and the 6A contract that go with it. And, you know, as a preface to the discussion of the slides and the details, I just want to echo a comment that Bill just made with respect to why 15 stories, why an LDA, why a 121A agreement. And I think he puts it well when he says that the point here is to try to make the most efficient use possible of what is a very scarce resource, that is publicly-owned land. And anytime you are able to build more units on the same footprint, that generally speaking, produces more economic effect to the city, and in the end, creates more intrinsic value over time, in terms of the public benefit and financial over time in terms of the public benefit and financial benefits that the city will enjoy. And it's an important point because, and I'll go to the first few points on the initial slide, to build a dollar, we'll say, project in the suburban market is quite difficult financially, really only in the downtown. And when I mean the downtown, I'm talking about Seaport, I'm talking about Back Bay, South End, increasingly in South Boston. It's only in those markets where the rent potential is high, meaning five dollars per square foot per month. So think a five thousand dollar rent for a one thousand square foot apartment. You have to be into that kind of rental revenue potential in order for the cost of high-rise construction to be supportable. And even I can tell you, because I consult to many of the developers who use buildings you see building up in Seaport, even those deals are getting thinner and thinner and thinner and more difficult to build because of the cost of constructing high-rise, steel takes steel and concrete as opposed to wood frame over a concrete podium. The cost of that construction methodology is dramatically higher. And so what you see is developers trying to match the rent expectation of the markets they're in to the cost of, and construction typology is portable by those rents. And so we have a conundrum in downtown Quincy with respect to high-rise construction, which is simply that the rents into the downtown today, and today, and quite frankly, for the foreseeable future, the near-term future, we'll say, are not sufficient to enable a developer to support the cost of that high-rise construction without some supports. Hence, our discussion today about the LDA and the 121A agreement and things that will enable that project to be built. Now, it all in the end tracks back to what kind of returns a developer needs to make in order for a project to be financeable. You know, no lender will lend on a project if the economics are subpar because it means the lender is taking on a tremendous amount of risk. If the developer is not making sufficient returns, then the lender is actually standing in the breach potentially with a risk. And so we have, we've modeled an analysis of the program that you've just seen. We have reviewed very carefully the performance that have been prepared by the developer. And we are very convinced that the project that you see here is not supportable without the agreements that I'm going to talk to you about in a few moments. And in fact, we've tried very hard in the negotiation, I like to say we've actually succeeded in the negotiation, to present the city with a package of financial agreements that walk the line, you know, on a razor edge between what is required for the project you see to be financeable, but that returns the greatest possible amount to the city in Quincy. And our philosophy, I'll just say, on the negotiating, city's negotiating side of the table, has been to make sure that you get a market rate return for your property. And that means a market rate price in the sale, and it frankly means market rate taxes from the project once it is done. And so that's been our sort of bedrock principle, is to adhere to this concept of giving the city of Quincy a market rate return for this scarce resource. To do that, we have crafted a 121A agreement, the two principal agreements, a 121A agreement, and a parking lease. Because as you've already heard, one of the things that makes this project work is a synergy between a public parking garage and the developer's use of some number of spaces in that garage and paying for them, along with other agreements that have to do with the building itself and the, in lieu of payment, of taxes payment that goes along with it. The 121A agreement has two primary components to it. First, the term, it's a four-year term. That's consistent with what the developer expects for their financing term. And in terms of the payments, there are two kinds. There's an annual payment, which is defined by a contract with the city that has some various elements to it, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. And it also, the LPA, the 121A agreement, includes the provision that if the project is sold or refinanced over the term of the 121A agreement, that the city would get a capital transaction participation. So ten percent of the net proceeds from any resale or refuancing of the project post-construction. The first mortgage doesn't count, but any subsequent financing or sale of the project, the city would get ten percent of net proceeds. And in addition, in the event that certain payments, again, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, reimbursement for permit fees, et cetera, have not been paid by the point of sale, there would be an acceleration of those payments in the event a sale or refinancing occurs. So those are the elements of it. And then the park, there's a parking lease because, as Bill has said, there is a relationship here between the developer's project and the garage. And we have devised a mechanism that enables the developer to pay for his share of that construction. So once the costs are known, we know how many spaces, generally how many the developer is seeking, we set a cost basis for the developer's share. Simple proration, how many spaces do you get as a percentage of total spaces that are being constructed? The city borrows the money to construct that garage, and the developer is responsible for paying for their, the city's cost of financing. So the debt service, whatever your debt service is to service your costs, the developer is responsible for paying his prorata share of that cost. So those are the elements. Yes, please.
Let me ask you.
Interview, interview. When you, when you're talking about, again, you've been paying, it is a prorata share based on the debt service, the garage's part?
Yes.
Just equal.
Yes, exactly. It's the development's prorata share.
Based on the calculation you're doing by the number of spaces.
Yes, exactly. So, and I've got actually a little bit of an arithmetic example of how this, I'm not going to think, how it would work. You know, obviously, we don't know yet what the garage cost is going to be because the garage is still in design, but the agreement is revised as a formula. So the cost is going to be what it is, and the developer's share is going to be a direct function of how many spaces and that cost.
And then, as it relates to the additional costs associated that through the various bands that are being proposed, and then related to the general occupation bonds, is there anything inherent in this project that pays those off, or does that simply become, again, part of the debt service budget?
The interest on the bands, the developer would be responsible to pay for their prorata share on the interest on the bands.
Prorata share.
Prorata share. They're not, they're not building and paying for the whole garage.
Right.
They're paying for the spaces in the garage that hold an effective.
Right, so those others are share, essentially, that is tied to our city budget.
Exactly. And I suppose to others who will ultimately use the garage, again, I think the garage discussion is for a fuller conversation on another night, but the principle here is that this development will pay for its share of that garage construction. Obviously, others who use the garage will be contributing in some form or fashion to the, on rate, they'll pay rent, they'll pay daily parking fees, they'll pay costs that will help to support the debt service or the balance of the project. The other aspect of the agreement pertains to the landing price because you're selling a fee parcel along with some additional easement rights. And as Bill said, we are waiting for the appraisal. It's been a bit of a, you know, we've lasted, it changes to how big the parcels are and what easement rights are going to go with. The appraiser is working, now that things are finalized, to get us a number and a report by Wednesday. But I think what I'd hope to do tonight is just at least to give you a, an overview of the methodology that the appraisers use it, and so that you have an ability to put the number in the end in context once you have it. There is, as Bill said, a fee parcel that will be owned, a full bundle of rights from the center of the earth to the top of the universe, on which the actual building improvements will be situated. And in addition, there are some limited surface easements which are being, from which the developer will be acquiring only certain rights, and the city will retain other rights. Mostly they are surface, the developer is acquiring surface rights for things like their driveway, like their landscaping in the back of the building, like those little surface parking lots that we saw that are going to serve the retail space. And the valuation is going to give us a consideration, a number, if you will, that accounts for not just the fee parcel, but the pertinent rights that run the easements. And I think the only other thing to say about it is that the city will retain rights, you know, some of what easement rights that are being conveyed are for, you know, the primary access into the parking garage. So the city will have shared rights in most of the easement areas, virtually all of the easement areas, whether it's a right to pass and repass, whether it's a right to drive, whether it's a right to, to use open space and sidewalk out front, et cetera. The principle that underpins the appraisal is the one that's always used. It's statutory legal, it has to be a market value, and it has to be predicated on highest and best use. And the highest and best use of the parcel is in fact, guess what, not for what the developer's proposing, because we know that that project can't be built unless there are special agreements that help to underpin the economics of that. So the highest and best use is predicated on the market value, which is, or the market use, which is a multifamily residential project to the maximum that can be built under the zoning, but with a feasible project, which is to say, stick-over-podium style development. So residential, as Bill said, in this case, four-story over three-story podium of garage. And that's, if you were selling this parcel to the market today, again, without any of the agreements that we've been talking about, that's what the market would want to do, is stick-over podium, because that's what's feasible. So the appraiser is using that highest and best use premise. And I want to underscore this so that when you see the appraisal, you're not looking for a picture like of the, of the project. You were, you should be looking for the concept of a stick-over podium development. And indeed, we asked to facilitate the appraisal process, we had Boston Survey consultants prepare for us a development plan on a, for a stick-over podium development for the site, so that the appraiser wasn't having to figure that out on his own, that we had a professional opinion about what could be built in the confines of zoning, assuming feasible stick-over podium style development. So highest and best use prevails, and the approach that the appraiser is using is to look at the light-kind transaction of other properties, stick-over podium in the suburbs where development has occurred. And those, the prices paid for those sites are then adjusted to reflect the specific conditions that we see in the downtown with respect to the program, how far it has, and how they're located, et cetera. And so that's the methodology you're going to see. And again, I-